We'll go ahead and call tonight's regular city council meeting. And for tonight's invocation, I've asked Alvin and Cruz Jones to please be the And for tonight's invocation, I'd ask Alvin Cruz Jones, please be the auditor.
Pray, oh, we love you, we thank you, pray for who you are and what you are in our lives. God, we ask for your wisdom and guidance as we make decisions for our community tonight. We pray, God, that you just put a special blessing upon our town and help us to prosper in sometimes, God, ways that we would not even think. We know that we have a lot on our plate and we know that somehow you, the supplier, needs. So we thank you in advance for just watching me guide you over us. We thank you for tonight and we just pray that you give us that wisdom that we ask for, God. I know that I've asked for it twice, but in these days, God, we need a lot of it and we just thank you for it in Jesus' name.
Take your name. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
John Burden.
Here.
Tom Heverly.
Here.
Tom Heverly.
Here.
Bruce Jones.
Here.
Dr. Moore.
Here.
Dr. Walters.
Here.
All eight, all are been present. First thing we have is a motion to use the live omnibus vote for approval of the minutes of the previous meetings and public hearings listed on tonight's agenda under the title Omnibus Vote Designation. Alvin Dorchiness, Second Alvin Jones, discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
John Burden.
Yes.
John Heverly.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Dr. Moore.
Yes.
Mark Ford.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. The minutes we'll be approving will be the minutes of the public hearing regarding the special use that was held July 20th, 2015. Minutes of the public hearing regarding appropriations held July 20th, 2015. Minutes of the regular meeting held July 20th, 2015. Minutes of the public facilities meeting held July 23rd, 2015. And minutes of the street and sewer committee meeting held July 23rd, 2015. I entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Second. Alvin Heverly, your second?
Second, Sean.
Alvin Walters, discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
John Dorchiness.
Yes.
John Heverly.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Dr. Moore.
Yes.
Mark Ford.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, before we go too much further, we've got the young man out there tonight, Derek Leahy. If you remember Derek, he was here, what, eight weeks ago, something like that? And he was elected to student council. Well, stand up and tell us, don't let me name anyone.
Yeah, about two months ago, I got the honor and I ran for the state president of the Illinois Association of Student Council, which I then did get. In the past, there are very few presidents have had the opportunity of their community to grant them with a sort of sign for recognition. And I was very thankful when I talked to you guys that not only did you give me one, but I have two. And of course, I posted it on social media and I went to the camp the next week and it was a great big thing because it wasn't a talk about me, but it was a talk about, wow, Taylorville, that's a great community, I wish I lived there, I wish that we had more schools like yours and that a community like yours that all comes together and can help everyone out like that. And it was just really great because I've always said, you know, I want to put Taylorville on the map and want to make us one of the best, most notorious schools in the state of Illinois. And I feel like it's just the things that we keep doing, it just makes everything more right.
Thank you. And to make things even better, the signs that we're going to welcome, let everybody know that Derek lives here in Taylorville. Someone else pick up the tab. It can't be better than that.
Your Honor, we have a sign on Route 29 coming from Springfield and a sign on Route 29 coming from Payna. And one further comment I want to make in regards to Derek, we hear a lot about the youth of Taylorville and sometimes it's not in a very firing menu, but I want to say that this is a good representation and we do have good students and good young people in the city of Taylorville.
Thanks again. All right, moving on, we have a resolution to retain First Midstate Incorporated from Lexington, Illinois as the underwriter and to retain Chatham and Cutler LLP as bond counsel and disclosure counsel for the issuance of general obligation bonds from an alternate revenue source. So I would entertain a motion. I'll make that. Second. Alvin Moore. Discussion or comment? Roll call.
Dr. Heverly.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Dr. Moore.
Yes.
Mark Ford.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
John Burden.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. We have an order to authorize an issuance not to exceed $3 million of general obligation bonds using the alternate revenue source of the city for the purpose of financing sewer system improvements and for the payment of expenses incident there too. And I entertain a motion to pass that ordinance.
I think you need to go to the paragraph on that.
Well, okay, I was going to get the section and have Pam read that by work.
Actually, I think you need to read sort of that on the...
I would now ask our city clerk to read the necessary verbiage to appease our city attorney.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance not to exceed $3 million in general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, in the city of Taylorville, Christian County, Illinois, for the purpose of financing sewer system improvements, including, but not limited to, necessary improvements in addition to the northeast sewer line of the city and for the payment of the expenses incident there too.
And I believe, Mr. Mayor, you're further announcing that you are directing the publication of the notice to send forth a determination pursuant to city council adopts this order to issue said bonds.
Yes, I am.
That is your answer.
All right. Alvin Bud, will you go ahead and make the motion to accept that ordinance or approve that ordinance?
Yes, sir.
I'll give you a second on that. Second, Alvin Moore. Alvin, per your approval, go ahead and make your comment.
Just a research of $3 million, can you ever read that one more time?
So we know. Well, we've got it taped, so I can play it for you. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Dr. Moore.
Yes.
Mark Ford.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
John Dorchiness.
Yes.
Dr. Heverly.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
I think, Mr. Mayor, at this time, you were declaring the motion carried and the orders was adopted and you're going to now sign the ordinance in open meeting as we...
I'm going to sign it right now, she's got the...
I got it.
And you're going to direct the city clerk to report it and record the city council of the city.
Yes, I will do that.
Issue one house as she's done.
Ernie and I were just talking about that, yes. I said, "Don't forget."
So they'll be signers.
All right, moving on. Next, we have an ordinance, this be as Class E liquor license, the Class K cater retailer liquor license, and the Class L special use permit liquor license. Like any other comment? Second. Alvin Ford, go ahead and make your comment.
Alvin Jones. Well, first, I'd like to thank all of the committee members for moving that original meeting before my vacation so that we could all be there to discuss this. Then I'd like to thank the council in my absence for discussing it and the city attorney, the emails back and forth, keeping me apprised while I was on vacation, and then subsequent emails explaining exactly what we've done. And with that, I'd like to say good job, thank you very much.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Dr. Moore.
Yes.
Mark Ford.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
No.
John Burden.
Yes.
John Dorchiness.
Yes.
Dr. Heverly.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to one. All right, then we have a motion to allow the Christian County Genealogical Society to hold their annual cemetery walk this year at Oak Hill Cemetery on September 20th, 2015, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Alvin Burden. Second. Second, Alvin Walters. Discussion or comment? All those in favor? Aye. Against? Motion passes. Please, just the city attorney updates.
I have about six or seven quick matters. First of all, the airport project. I've been trying to include everyone on this series of emails going back and forth with myself and Mr. Mariko. Pam, probably got the latest one, has researched the legal descriptions for the requested properties so that Mr. Mariko can finish his paperwork that was sent to him this afternoon. I've asked him to report back to me before this meeting, but I've not heard anything, so I have nothing to tell you, other than he keeps telling us it's soon to be completed and we'll get this done, hopefully. The next thing is on the Verizon Tower lease discussions. The mayor's been in contact with the agent and they're trying to set up another conference call meeting with their attorney, myself, the mayor, and Mr. Spiegel. I think there is still some concerns from what you see going back and forth. The threshold paragraph we're talking about is the approval as to what to put on the tower and whether or not the city has the right to say what goes on the tower. I think they're coming back and they would like to have, if it's similar equipment, that that approval be forthwith or pretty close. And, but they want the right to be able to put any additional equipment in which it appears to approve or dissimilar equipment, but not necessarily on a reasonableness standard, which as I suggested, that would be judged by all the leases they have nationwide. And I think that's what we're struggling with, we're going to have probably another conversation, but if we don't get past that, I don't know where we're going to go, because there's a lot of paragraphs that we need to address, but that seems to be the main one, I assume it's on consuming with that kind of a thought process.
I have a question, Your Honor, for the city attorney.
Yes.
To find similar, we'll make that determination and decide that it's similar. I have a problem with that.
Well, that's what our objection was, Mr. Walters, is that ultimately, this is your tower.
Right.
It's a very expensive tower and the city should decide what goes on it or not going. I think that's what Mr. Spiegel very strongly admitted about that position and that's what we're trying to purge, willing to work with them to make something that might work for both parties, but at the end of the day, it should be the city decide what goes on the tower.
Right.
And I think Mr. Spiegel's looking at not only from an aesthetic viewpoint, but the integrity of the tower itself, putting holes into it, putting structures on it.
Well, one final comment, I respect Superintendent, his thoughts on this as far as what he wants to do, and I call it Superintendent Spiegel's tower. So if he decides he doesn't want something on it, then that's what we should live with, gentlemen, we've been messing around with Verizon on this.
He's very protective of your tower, I can tell you that, as well as should be.
Alvin Burden.
Yeah, I feel the same way, Alvin Walters, is, you know, we have a enormous amount of money wrapped up in this tower number one and it's beautiful, okay? They did nice job on it. Corporate America tends to want to run over everybody because they can, they have the money to do that. This is our tower, if we can't get exactly what we want, then although the money would be solely missed, we need to just tell them to walk, they can make that equipment on some other structure somewhere close by Taylorville.
Any other questions?
Good, the other matter, I just received in today's mail a letter from an attorney representing the Matta Joe folks. And as you recall, we passed an ordinance, I think, a minute or two ago, or maybe last meeting, that we drafted a document, it's my understanding that there was a couple of concerns, those concerns were addressed, and in fact, I spoke to Mr. Matta Joe and he was okay with it, and then we get this letter today that there's a number of things that they want the city to consider doing. I've sent you a quick email on that, but just for outlining it, and again, they want you to maintain the roadway, they want to have permanent access to it, they want you to pay all the real estate taxes that was incurred for last year and also the pro-laden ones for this year, and also take care of the drainage problems on there. So that's your decision if you want to do that, and also the survey, which I don't understand that because they furnished the survey in the letter. The other things they brought up is already in the contract, we've already agreed to it, so I just sent to you Mr. Spiegel's comments on that and got his permission right from the meeting starting to send it off to you, so you have his comments, and I think once you evaluate his comments, you can direct me or the mayor which direction we should go further with this. Right now, they have not signed it, it doesn't look like they're going to sign it until we meet their demands, but their attorney's out of the office until a week from now, so we can move along.
One question on that.
Yes, sir.
Did, in that letter, is it not now asking for their attorney fees?
Oh, absolutely, I forgot that too, oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. We've already agreed and they wanted to have, you know, the free water tap that was already in the contract, they wanted us to pay for the title work, which we put that in the contract, we were going to pay for the transfer declaration stamps, that's all in there already, I didn't understand those types of points. And I do recommend that at the end of the day, whatever you decide, if you want to do those things, the form of the contract we put together, it should be made. And there's stuff in there that protects your, what, once they do tap on the water, how it can be further used by other people, so that language, I think, is important for the city's decision.
My comment I had on that, I think is, I spoke briefly with Superintendent Spiegel on this, and I think it's time that he moves to plan B. The longer these things go, the more attorney fees, the more involved it gets, and you give an inch, you end up giving a mile. If we need to, we'll walk away from it.
The next thing is that I have put together the revised liquor application forms to address those new classes of licenses that you just adopted tonight. Pam is asking Cindy to review those, she was on vacation, I think, last week, so we ought to hear something yet this week on that. Your alternate annexation agreement has been drafted and sent to the city clerk's office for that new order that you've done. And I've also corrected your order form for Mr. Coward concerning the inoperable damage and abandoned licensed vehicles for the property farm you use now. I'm still working on your portal storage facility, so I've been getting some emails from Mr. Jones, just to remind me what needs to go in there, so I'm still working on that. So I said, unless there's any questions.
Any questions? Alvin Burden.
American Tower, have you heard anything from them?
Uh, no, well, I heard from the mayor is that they're, what I understand, the emails going back and forth is that American Tower agent is trying to figure out who their attorney is so they can put him in contact with me, I guess that's what it's about.
I didn't hear from them today with...
It's corporate America.
Anything else? All right, we'll move on to mayor updates. First of all, I want to thank the local media for working with the city and the school district in an attempt to educate the public regarding the proposed redirecting of traffic on North Palm East between Junior High and North School. Our number one concern in schools as well as the safety of the children. With that said, there may be several changes made throughout the upcoming school year and we do this in an effort to make sure that traffic flows as efficiently and safely as possible in that area, so we're trying some things, it's kind of like my golf swing, we're trying some things and when we finally, hopefully, find something that works, you know, then we'll make it more permanent, so that's what we're trying to do and we ask everyone for their patience and constructive criticism. We'll find that golf swing next weekend. The other thing I'd like to do is, again, ask the media to help me out a little bit here, I've got a plea for some new tree board members. You know, the trees in the city are extremely important and we need to take care of them. The problem we're having is most of them were planted, you know, 70, 80 years ago on the boulevards and now they're a problem. The boulevards aren't a great place for them to be, but it's a problem we're going to have to deal with over the next decade and we need some people that know something about trees, that care about trees, to come forward and help us. And it's a very tough job to sit on that committee, make good recommendations, do your homework and everything else, then they bring it to us and sometimes we just don't have the money or the time to take their suggestions and that's frustrating for them. So I ask people to come and help knowing that, that despite their hard work, we may not be able to take their recommendations, but we sorely need some people if they're willing to do that for us. Last thing I have, something I just kind of learned about today, and I basically kind of want to take a poll, I guess, there's a piece of equipment, you know, that Alvin Walters will take over here in a minute, that one of our mowers broke yet again and instead of repairing it for about the third time, it looks like we might have a possibility of trading it in and getting a better mower. Alvin Walters, you want to take it from there and kind of tell us?
This piece of equipment, gentlemen, is what we call a batwing mower and it was previously owned by the Fair Board and, of course, they didn't abuse it at all out there in the morning and they do, they do a nice job, they traded it in for some different type of equipment to a General Ag. And the batwing that we have right now, it keeps breaking the shafts on it and we've had some other repairs, we spent in excess of $2,000 just here recently trying to keep that thing going and I can't see putting any additional information, money, time, effort, so forth into that. This is a piece of equipment with a trade-in allowance that we can get for just a little over $5,000 and it's split between three departments, so it's sorely needed, in fact, one of our superintendents said I could use it today. So I would encourage you gentlemen to be positive on the poll for this and we can get this then lined up, it'll then come to my street sewer committee for formal, but for formal review and formal vote with this, it'll give us a chance to go ahead and get that piece of equipment and start using it. And if Superintendent Wiseman has any decent information.
No, it's just, it's a better, heavier batwing mower than what we got now. Right now, we got a land pride and this here is a bush hog and it's a lot heavier more.
All right, thank you, Mayor. And the price is $10,500. Right. I'm going to trade in at $5,000, making the, the out-of-pocket money we'd have to pay, it'd be fifty, about a hundred dollars. Right. So can you, questions?
That would come out of several budgets.
Three departments, that would be the cemetery, the street and... Lake. Lake. Yeah. Any other questions? Is anyone against, let me just ask that.
Mr. Mayor, you had to suggest that you handled this, rather take a poll, is simply you just, unless someone individually contacts you tomorrow not to do it or opposed to it, that you would just do it on your own, since it's not on agenda.
Well, I understand that, I understand that, but I didn't think I could really do it on my own, so I didn't want to make it stay proof that way. As long as we understand that everyone's in general agreement, then I have more confidence in doing it, so. All right, we'll move on to committee reports. Discussions or motions to approve, adopt, and/or deny, and/or table, and/or amend, and/or revert to an appropriate committee in all or part of the matter regarding the following subject, men have discussed at the committee level, sorry, the public facilities committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public facilities meeting met on 23rd, 6 o'clock. There's only one motion tonight and everybody's listening here, I'm going to check to change that a little bit. Motion, Alvin Walters, Second Alvin Heverly, to recommend the city council to allow the public to place a drug take-back collection box in a forder and anywhere the police department can have the box free later. That motion carried 40, I'd like that one more.
Second. Second, Alvin Heverly, discussion or comment? All those in favor? Aye. Aye, against? Motion passes.
Motion, Alvin Heverly, Second Alvin Walters, to adjourn, motion carried 40, I think that's one motion.
Okay, that one's good, we pass that and we adjourn, isn't it? So we have...
We already took the...
We're just doing the motions.
Okay, I'm sorry, maybe I didn't hear that motion. Okay, our motion, well, yeah, so that's what I'm saying, so we're ready to move on. Street and Sewer Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have five motions for the Street and Sewer Department. First motion I'd like to make is to approve the 30th Annual Chili Fest to be held October 3rd and 4th with permission to set up closed streets and place barricades on the south side of the square beginning at noon on Friday, October the 2nd. Then at 6:00 p.m., we'll close the whole square until cleanup is complete on Sunday, October the 4th, on completion of special events application. This is exactly what we've done in the past years.
That's the motion?
That's the motion.
Second. Second, Alvin Heverly, discussion or comment? All those in favor? Aye. Against? Motion passes.
Next motion I'll make is a motion to approve the request for the 12th Annual American Legion Veterans Rally to be held on Saturday, August the 29th, in the 1:00 block of West Franklin with barricades placed in Washington Street and Main Street on completion of the special events application. This is the same thing we did last year and I'll have a further comment on that after the motion.
Do you have a second on that? Second. Alvin Heverly, go ahead and make your comments, Alvin Walters.
I personally contacted all the businesses on that block and have agreement with all that there is not a conflict or a problem with having this event. And we have Mr. Mariko sitting here this evening, if you gentlemen have any additional questions for him, we anticipate at least 200 motorcycles.
All right, anybody else? All those in favor? Aye. Against? Motion passes.
All right, the next motion is to approve the July 14th, 2015 tree board minutes. I'll make that motion.
Second on that. Alvin Moore, discussion, hearing now, all those in favor? Aye. Against? Motion passes.
Next motion I'll make is to direct Superintendent Wiseman to prioritize which trees are the most dangerous and work with the tree cutters and then remove.
Do you have a second on that? Second. Alvin Heverly, discussion or comment? All those in favor? Aye. Against? Motion passes.
The next motion I'll make, an amendment to, gentlemen, with your indulgence, I want to make a motion to waive the bidding process and allow Superintendent Wiseman to go forward with performance pipe lining to do the lining of sewers and patching located at 724 East Ashen Alley to Long Street for 387 feet, grant the prospect which runs under a whole construction to patch an area at Pond East Street, total of $50,875. $48,000 has been budgeted, the balance will come from the special project fund for the sewers.
Second. Second, Alvin Heverly, discussion or comment?
This...
Alvin Burden.
Is this the project that was given the night of the meeting?
Yes. And also, Your Honor, this was the same firm that did this in the past. It takes some specialized companies that do this and a few in far between.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Dr. Moore.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
John Dorchiness.
Yes.
Dr. Heverly.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
That's all we have.
Our, our, I'm just saying, is that two separate motions, I mean, one to waive and then one to...
It's all in the same motion, the way he plays it, I agree.
All right, then we can move on to the motion.
He was on the ball, he caught that.
Motion to approve then a ratified payment of bills in the amount of $269,448.11.
Second.
Bud. Second, Alvin Burden, go ahead, Alvin Bud.
Health insurance, $105,546.98. Health insurance tax, $3,857.77. Electric power departments, $2,733.15. Office supplies, $1,037.9. Walmart, Ron's, Petty Cash, $1,575.44. Garbage, $1,998. Need temporary help, $2,714. Illinois Public Risk for workers comp, September, $25,415. Meyer Austin and Ronald, $6,000. Don and Jackie Broaddus for real estate tax rebate, $1,193.13. Green and Bradford, $14,120.7. Thompson Blue's West for state statutes and zoning bulletins, $986.82. Christian County FS for propane, $3,703.82.